All right, welcome to tonight's Board of Education Business Meeting, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Sloan, if you would call it up, please.
Mr. Cox is absent. Ms. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Lawland?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Mundy?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of our borders, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will do introductions at this time. We'll start at our table to the left this time, work our way all the way to our agenda. We'll start at the far end with Mr. Hay, who is our business manager. Sitting to his left is our curriculum director.
To his left?
His right, my left.
To his left, did I say that wrong? His right, huh? I'm directionally challenged tonight. I do Jones, and to her right is our assistant superintendent. I'm terrible at considering back to things. Melissa Tice, and to her right is our human resources director, Devin Mary. As we go around to my left, I'll get this right at least, Nate Mundy, our board member in the empty seat just between him and our superintendent is Phil Cox, where he been on movie, but he is in Florida. Actually, he comes back tomorrow, so his whole Florida trip's almost over. To my immediate left is our superintendent, Dr. Adrian Townsend. My name is John Lawland, president of the board for two thousand twenty-three, and the way I'm doing this, probably that's it. To my right is our vice president, Leslie Miller. To her right is Autumn Hartley, U.S. board member, six months ago, first winter, she's getting the hang of it now. And to the right of her is our student rep, Madeline Keane, who's in year one, and she's going to serve next year as well, right?
Yes.
All right. And then to her right at the end of our table here is our treasurer, Ryan Stone. Now, that's our way of putting things. We will go to item number five, which is to recommend if the motion and a second for agenda for the March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. I'm going to motion and a second to adopt an agenda.
I motion.
Second.
And we have no agenda, right? All right. Mr. Sloan, if you would, call the road, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Lawland?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right, so item six is normally comments from the public regarding items on our agenda. There won't be any comments at this point, but there will be some later at our general comment section. So we'll move on to item seven, which is our communication update. Miss Flotter.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to remind you about the different ways you can find out what's going on in the school district, westcarrolltonschools.com, also Facebook at West Carrollton City Schools, and Twitter at WC City Schools. Some things that are coming up, March twenty-seventh through March thirty-first is spring break. The Pirates will return to school Monday, April third. And the musical, tickets are now on sale. Whoops. Tickets are now on sale, and you can connect to our website, westcarrolltonschools.com. There's a big picture of the Addams Family that will be going through, the rotating pictures. You can click there to get tickets. You can also go to the district news and make connection there. You can also see a copy of the playbill. Senior citizens breakfast is coming up, and we talked about being old last meeting, and I have to say, I probably qualify for this now, but anyway, it's coming up, and it's a great experience for our senior citizens in the school district. They get to come to breakfast, the students serve them, and then they get to see a preview of the musical, and that will be at eight forty-five on April twentieth, but it's important to RSVP to Wendy's Cirque at nine three seven eight five nine five one two one, extension eighty-eight hundred. And this was a picture of some other things that are happening right now. This is a mural project that the mural club has been working on, and Mr. G., he was there to install it at the West Carrollton branch of the Dayton Metro Library. So he's very excited about that and looking forward to some more community projects, but I urge you always to go to the library, but now you have another reason to go to the library, and that's to see the great artwork our kids have done. I wanted to talk about the career fair coming up next week at the high school, and I want to thank in advance the vendors who are coming out to support the kids, give them an idea about different careers. This is actually a picture of now Captain Whitehead with the West Carrollton Police, or Police, excuse me, Fire Department, and he came into the middle school, and he was telling the kids what it takes to be a firefighter if they're looking into that kind of career. He also did a hands-on CPR training with them, so it was, it was really interesting, a lot of fun. As always, watch for that information coming directly from your child's school through texts, email, and phone calls. And as always, watch out for Mr. Doyle, and anyone else in school parking lots. Eyes up, phones down, go slow. Please watch out in your neighborhoods as well as children are walking back and forth from bus stops. And that was all I had this evening.
Thank you.
It can be.
We'll move on to item nine, which is a discussion by our superintendent regarding several policies.
Thank you. So tonight I have several first read policies, which we will not take action on, and then we also have a second reading that Mrs. Tice introduced last coordinating for. So bear with me. I try to condense it as much as I can. Bylaw zero-one-three-one point-one, technical corrections. So this is if a person changed their position, and we have them specifically listed in a policy, we no longer need to readopt the policy, we can just make the change, which is nice. Policy two-one-one-four, meeting state performance indicators. We're going from an A to F report card to the new five-star rating. Policy two-two-seven-one, college credit plus program. Military families can complete any remaining coursework online, or they can withdraw from the course if their parents leave and they need to leave our school and have no academic or financial penalties. Policy two-four-one-two, homebound instruction program, they changed it to providing five hours of instruction per week. It just matches hours instead of days. It's consistent with state law. Policy three-one-two-zero-point-oh-nine and four-one-two-oh-point-oh-nine are being rescinded and combined into eight-one-two-oh. This requires volunteers that do sporting events to have a people activity permit. We already do that. Policy fifty-three-ten, health services. It reflects current changes to the state law. It also addresses that students can return to an activity if they have had a concussion and things are documented. So, policy fifty-four-sixty, graduation requirements. This hopefully is the last change to graduation requirements. This is for students of year twenty-three and beyond, and that's the new requirements, removing some of the changes we had during COVID. So, policy fifty-six-ten, removal, suspension, expulsion, and permanent exclusion of students. This is if a student moves into your district, you have to offer a hearing if they've been expelled or suspended in their previous district. We already do that. It's reflection of changes in the law, but like I said, we already do that. Policy sixty-three-twenty-five, federal grant procurement. It just recognizes that all grant contracts are not subject to the Davis Bacon Act. Policy eighty-three-ninety, animals on district property. It gives us some structures to therapy dogs and/or comfort animals. Policy eighty-four-hundred, school safety, threat assessment team, which we've talked about. We all know that we've been to training, and every school has a threat assessment team. Policy eighty-four-twenty, emergency situations at school. It added the verbiage of tornado watch, which I thought was apropos since we just had a tornado. Policy eighty-four-sixty-two, student abuse and neglect. This is related to errands law, and they want us to include age-appropriate training for K-12 students on child sex abuse, and schools must also provide training to staff, which we will do that through Public School Works. There's a lot this time. Policies seventy-five-forty, seventy-five-forty-eight-point-oh-one and seventy-five-forty-point-oh-two, web accessibility content, apps, and services. It recommends that we have best practice and meet the state laws, making sure that we are area compliant, and we do that. Policy seventy-five-forty-point-oh-three, seventy-five-forty-point-oh-four, eighty-three-hundred, eighty-three-oh-five, eighty-three-one-five, and those are all just revisions to the acceptable use policy for students, staff, our organization. If we were to be hacked, we have a plan. Information security and information management, they're all just very small revisions, and most of them are pronoun changes. Policy ninety-seven-hundred-oh-one, advertising and commercial activities. This is revised. It's guidance concerning the appropriate content of advertising when it's not feasible for the advertisement to be reviewed, and I have to approve advertisements. So, then I have policy one-six-one-five, three-two-one-five, four-two-one-five, five-five-one-two, seven-four-three-four, nine-one-six-zero. This is for us to be one-hundred percent tobacco-free, and it also gives us a list of opportunities for adults and youth to help them stop smoking, vaping, nicotine products. So that's a new list approved by the state, and that is all I have, and the next one is Mrs. Tice.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
With the, like, going from letter grades to, like, the star rating, is that implementing next year?
No, they already did it this year. They just put it in the policy. It's from the state. We don't.
This is state.
Okay, so it's not like.
This is state report card. No.
I heard that there was potential of, like, affecting, like, high school, it was, like, in the future.
No, it has nothing to do with your letter grades.
Okay, sorry.
No, you're okay. If they keep changing the report card, it's the district, so we now get stars. So, any other questions? There's a lot.
Yeah.
They're all pretty small changes, but there's a lot.
So, of course, there's eighty pages here, so I haven't been able to read them all since Friday, but I did have a few questions. Do you want me to have the mic?
Yes.
Don't you? I'm like, I'm trying to learn my lesson from last night, and I won't bump it. Okay, hold on. So, twenty-two-seventy-one, that's about the college credit plus. I just had a question about it. So, there's a reading statement process that's being implemented.
Correct.
Do you know, do you think, do you expect many kids to go through that reading statement process?
No, because most kids who are already in college credit plus stay in college credit plus.
That's what I think. And then who monitors and stays up to date on the coursework and activity participation part of the reading statement?
It is the guidance counselor's parents and students.
Okay, so that's a little team effort. And then, of course, I just also wanted to mention, I'm happy that the military families can have a little bit more, you know, yeah. And so, and then for the tobacco use prevention, it's nice that we actually are holding up those standards. I mean, especially for staff. I know it probably is not nice for some people. I mean, my parents are smokers and things like that, and I know those things is tough, but you mean to have those expectations for the kids. I'm happy that we can do that, you know, and to have training for that as well, or training, like, I don't know what you call it, to get them to.
It's giving us more opportunities is what it's doing. So, you know, we always have, so they have the Ohio Tobacco Quit Line, this is my life, my quit, becoming an ex, this is quitting, so there's, you know, not N O T, it's all by dashes on tobacco, Healthy Futures Curriculum, and then they also have adult. So this is new. This is the new part of the policy.
And yeah, and there's a lot that seems like it comes with it, so I just wanted to say that's awesome, that we do things like that. And then, this is my last one for now. So, fifty-four-sixty with the grad- graduation requirements. There's a part that said astronomy, and it was highlighted. Is that something that we're looking forward to?
No, so when we, I said the same thing, because I love that plus. No, actually, because it's in there, when we did policy updates with Neola, they say leave it in in case it's something we offer later.
Okay. And then, of course, I'm so happy that we have financial literacy in even, what is that, CPR in a way?
As an area.
As requirements, which is, I mean, both very, very important things, especially to me, was the financial literacy. So, you mean to have those actually be a requirement for that is a really big deal to me personally, so I'm very, very happy about that. So, other than that, I think that's all I got for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for the financial literacy, will next year seniors have to take that course? Since it's twenty-three and beyond?
It's a half-credit course. Yes, I would think you'll have to take it. If it hasn't been embedded in your social studies course, which is where it was before, you'll probably have to take it.
I would just mention last night at CTC's meeting, what I spent an hour and a half. They did the policy reading too, and Mr. Barry, at that board meeting, superintendent didn't go through these policies, the human resources person did. So.
He gave me the.
Not to throw that at you, but I just thought I'd let you know, you know, you didn't have to deal with that. So, because when, when, when they did that, he didn't say anything, I'm like, oh, he's already delegated that to somebody else. So, anyway, that's all, that's really not important, but we have Melissa Tice to talk to us about the policy that we brought up in the last meeting, and then we're voting on later, okay? Or what?
Yes. I don't really have anything else to say about it unless you have questions. We talked about this the last time, this is the second reading, and this really, this board policy is something that is newly adopted. It's something that we have to have in place by April the third to submit to O D E to say that, yes, we did adopt a policy that addresses this. Has to do with our students with disabilities who are educated elsewhere, and making sure that all of the timelines that exist for I D E A, which is the governing piece of legislation that deals with students with disabilities, making sure that we're still monitoring, even when kids are outside of our district, making sure that we're still doing progress notes and sharing with parents how their students are doing, and making sure that we're still having annual meetings with all of the stakeholders. So that's, that's what that policy addresses, and if you have any questions, I can answer specifically what those are.
We're good. We'll vote on it, so we get to item fifteen.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so on to item ten on the agenda, and Mr. Sloan.
Thank you. I ask that the board approve items ten A through ten C.
All right, and the motion and a second, please. Mr. Sloan, any comments?
On the, on the financial reports, there are an item two established from O thirty-four, which I mentioned at our last meeting, which is the half-mill maintenance for the OFCC project. The Fund Thirty-four language is also in a resolution in a, in an item later in the agenda. On the financial reports, we're running fairly close to the monthly actuals compared to the November forecast, so things are going well there. And there are two donations, one hundred dollars from Easterly, and then a very generous donation of five thousand dollars from Precision Automation and Robotics to the Robotics Club.
All right, very good. Anybody else have any questions about item ten before we vote? All right, Mr. Sloan, call the road, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Lawland?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right, item eleven, and Mr. Barry.
Good evening. Superintendent recommends that the board approve illicit personnel items, item eleven A through eleven five.
Need a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Barry, any comments?
Going to defer to Mr. Hay for item A.
Yep, and Blenda Cox is listed in item A, transportation coordinator. That'll be a huge shoes to fill. She'll be retiring effective August first, so she'll get us this summer, so we're looking to start moving on that process pretty quick. You know, Blenda and I have worked together for, you know, twenty-seven, almost twenty-eight years now, and I depend on her more than any other person in this district on that. I can tell her anything, talk to her about anything, and our doors are wide open, and, you know, so that'll be tough to fill those shoes after so many years, trying to find that person that's the right fit, who's good at dealing with the bus drivers, the students, the parents, the staff, the community, making sure the buses are just as safe as they are right now, and everybody's up to par, so that, I think that there's some people out there. We'll find the right person that'll step in and take over, but it'll be, be tough not seeing Blenda come August first every morning, so.
I think he neglected to congratulate her for her retirement.
No, no, I told her she had to wait till item five.
If he does, it'll be with tears. Yes, it definitely will be hard to replace. Anybody here that won't, it'd be hard to replace. Certainly, I saw that, and okay, that wasn't, was that on your radar? Did this surprise you a little bit?
It's been. We've, we've talked about it for a while, so.
All right. Well, transportation's obviously one of the most important aspects of this year, getting kids back and forth to school and all the things that go along with that, so she definitely will be, it'll take somebody to fill the shoes that she's filled for. She's done this since you took over as business manager. What, has that been ten years yet?
Yeah, it's been ten years.
So, all right, well, let's, anybody else have any questions about any of these, item listed in item eleven? All right, Mr. Sloan, call the road, please.
Mr. Lawland?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
All right, item twelve, Mr. Barry.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve illicit personnel items twelve A through twelve C.
Need a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Any comments?
Just one comment. Samantha Loan, teacher at the high school, has been working with a group of students that are known as the Pirates, and we've seen them work in partnership with the band. Last year, she was in compensated. It was a club that we may possibly vote or work with the athletic board of control to look at moving into a sport in the future. However, right now, it's a club, and last year it was a club as well, so she spends a lot of time with them, and it's year-round, so finally we got her in the board agenda.
All right, carry on. Anybody else have any questions? All right, Mr. Sloan?
Mrs. Miller?
Upstate.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Lawland?
Yes.
All right, item thirteen, back to town.
I'd like to recommend that the board approve the proposed high school robotics student trip to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, from April fifth, two thousand twenty-three through April eighth of two thousand twenty-three, as presented. The trip will provide students the opportunity to learn engineering and teamwork skills as they work together to build a robot that will compete in this year's challenge.
All right, need a motion and a second for item thirteen.
So, just a reminder to our parents and our board, this is live streamed, so you can actually see the kids in Pittsburgh. It's a lot of fun to watch. We'll make sure that the link is posted on our.
And actually, they're at the Miami Valley Regional, which is in Cincinnati. They're there today, but I don't have access to the link yet, so I'll be sending that out.
But you can watch the whole competition live. It's a lot of fun, so I wish them on, Harvey.
And I think you're referring to Xavier, I believe, where they're at.
They're at Xavier University, correct.
Yeah. All right, anybody else have any questions, or? Mr. Sloan, call the road, please.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Lawland?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
All right, Melissa, are you ready for item fourteen?
Yeah, I've got her. All right, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the amended contracts as presented with respect to educational programs for two students, and this is pretty typical for students who are educated elsewhere.
All right, need a motion and a second, please.
I motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Sloan, call the road, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Lawland?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right, we're back to item fifteen, which we referred to earlier in our policy section. I think we've covered it pretty well. Anybody have any final thoughts or questions? We'll be a motion and a second, though, for this, so need a motion and a second for item fifteen.
Second.
Mr. Sloan, call the road, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Lawland?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right, item sixteen, Mr. Sloan.
Thank you. I ask that the board enter into an agreement with Meta Solutions for Services for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four as presented.
Need a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Comments?
Every year, we, we approve the contract with Meta Solutions. Meta helps us with several things, including submitting our academic student and financial data up to campus, so.
Partners for all time. All right, and will you call the road, please?
Mr. Lawland?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
All right, item seventeen, and Mr. Sloan again.
Ask that the board approve as presented the resolution ratifying the execution of the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Project Agreement and Related Matters.
Okay, need a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Please, go ahead and talk about this for a minute.
I, we went over this last, at the last meeting, just briefly, just kind of, the one thing that it does talk about, as I mentioned, is establishing the Fund Thirty-four for the half-mill maintenance requirement, and just another document that I returned and sent me to finalize, which we're guarding our face to our construction project.
All right, you would call the road, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Lawland?
Yes.
And the last time to pick online, item eight-two is back to me again.
Ask that the board adopt the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to Montgomery County Auditor as presented.
Need a motion and a second?
Second.
This is an annual thing we do, and then just time you for a second, if you would.
Yeah, so this document comes from the county auditor every, we just have to, the county auditor has us approve it by March thirty-first every year, and it just lists all of our different levies that have been approved in the past, and has the estimated revenue reaching every levy, and so it's just kind of a formal, formal approval every, every February, March.
All right, if you would, call the road, please.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Lawland?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Student report, Mr. Key, any due challenges?
Yes, so, like, I've just been kind of giving everyone update each week with the mentoring and district-wide organization that I'm starting. I met with Mr. Krissick from the middle school on Monday, and that went well. He gave me some dates that would not look good, so I'm starting to slowly find a date that will work for fourth quarter, hopefully, and me and Ms. Happner have started to get teacher recommendations for students in the high school to be a part of the organization. I also was able to go to the state house today with Nathan, and it was really, it was really cool. It was with M, whatever this is, M C E S C, and it was so fun. We got to talk to some legislators about things that we want to see in our, our future. Um, and it was so fun, we got to talk to, um, some legislators about things that we want to see in our, our future, um, schools in our Montgomery County and just in the statewide, um, it was really awesome. And, um, and then we had our roundtable meeting this past Saturday and we now have a date for our, um, how are we calling it, conference or?
I don't know what we're calling it, I struggle with that.
Yeah, so, that's all.
Meeting.
I'll elaborate a little bit on two things you brought up.
Did, were there any of the, uh, other school reps today?
Yeah, so it was, it was, uh, it was all of the delegates that could go, I thought they showed up. So, um, there was, and fifteen of us from across the county.
So some of them are student reps from other schools?
I know Jacob's on that, he's Centerville.
Yeah, Jacob was there, Thomas was there.
Yeah, those little kids are student reps too. So the, the county has a, uh, this is the third time you've done it, Matt, since school year started? Just the last meeting, just a couple?
This was just a field trip, so it wasn't really technically any names, so it's just an extra, but we've had three meetings.
Yeah, so the, I don't know what they call it either, but the county basically has a meeting quarterly and two students from each high school in this county get, uh, chosen. That's what I'm guessing for the most part. Um, and Nathan, who is my son, he is student body president. Um, and Matt, who are the two students chosen from our high school, but they join with the other students from the other high schools and they collaborate for an entire day, they spend the day together, they have speakers come in and talk to them. And that group today took the trip to Columbus, that's specifically what she's referring to. He was pretty, my, my son's geek about government and politics and he wants to go to law school and so he was been, he's been talking about this for a month. Um, but, uh, in addition to that, we have, um, this district along with Centerville, Bellevue, and Northmont have collaborated for about two and a half years with all of our student reps to try and come up with topics to talk about with our legislator or state school board, uh, et cetera. And so this past November, we had an actual OSBA presentation that Matt and some of the other student reps, all the other student reps helped us to prepare. And so even though we don't really typically have a name for this, I would, we're basically going to do the, the student rep presentation that we did at OSBA and we're inviting, um, districts from the seven counties that border, or six counties that border Montgomery County, Montgomery makes seven. Um, so this county plus the sixth that border this county, we're inviting all the student, uh, not student, but, uh, presidents of those boards and superintendents are getting an email from us to hear more about what creating a student rep for your school district would look like. So our student reps are going to talk, we're going to host it here, um, and it's going to be April twenty-ninth. So hopefully, we're talking about, uh, quite a few school districts, we include seven counties or. So hopefully we'll have a few of them decide to come and hear what it's, hear what it's involved in creating a student rep program. Speaking of that, it's time to, to throw out applications to our high school students for next year as well. Matty's going to stay with us, but we will certainly, um, throw it out there for any students interested to join Matty and be student rep with us. And we'll be starting that process next week, give them, uh, make the announcement before spring break, give them some time to think about it and then we'll, we'll have the application through about the middle of April for any students interested in joining, joining Matty. She could use some help, I'm guessing she wouldn't mind having a little, uh, Centerville, for instance, they have five student reps. Now that's a bigger school obviously than we are, but, um, still, that's a lot of help, that's a lot of different avenues you can take when you have people to delegate things to that, that are interested. There's one member, uh, one member of Northmont, but there's one member of Centerville who, all he likes to do, let's just get to that. All he likes to do is, is study policy. He come up with ways, I mean, that's such, no offense to what we just did, but that is so boring. So, but he loves it, he'll just sit and he'll go through the policies and try to figure out ways to make them better, which Jacob, that's what Jacob just loves. So, so it's each his own, but, um, but that is, I think it's, I think any district should at least entertain it. And I'm, for the few years we've done this, we've really enjoyed having students and now they're sitting up here with us, so Matty is. So, uh, we appreciate her taking time, uh, every two weeks to join us. So that being said, we're at the point now of doing committee reports, or does anybody have anything to share there?
I have a few things. It's been a busy few weeks, it seems like, um, so, I know we have a district leadership, uh, committee, what, last Wednesday? I mean, it was great, I mean, there are so many things that go on at district leadership. And, you know, I think, well, we're focusing on, uh, testing strategies for, uh, for students, for them to, you know, we practice our testing for ACT and probably all sorts of other testing things that are going on in this type of season now. So, I mean, everything from, uh, what, contracts for a raffle to study groups of some sort? I mean, they've had so many different things, at least eight, because we did this whole project with eight, all, eight different. Yeah, Jigsaw, that's what it was, with eight different ones. Um, very great for learning, I mean, it, just cool for myself to know, like, I mean, this would be good way for me to actually understand some things that I need to understand, so, shoot, maybe I should go back to school, I don't know. Also, with our Athletic Board of Control meeting, which I think was the day after, I think about it. Um, I, I'm sure Leslie will say a little bit more about it, but, um, we're going to get helmets at some point for the, uh, for the high school football team, we need some more. I mean, they were, uh, some of them are failing inspections, so it's about time to, uh, to, you know, replace those. And then of course, if anyone wants to be a volleyball, or I think, what was the other one, I think cheer.
Cheer, cheer.
If anyone wants to be a volleyball and cheer coach, now's your time, so. Uh, think about it if you could, and then, I was going to say with like Community Action Board, we have pushed that back now to October. Of course, to me, that breaks my heart, I wanted it as soon as possible, and now pushing it back another six months is a heartbreak, right? But, um, hopefully we can, uh, you know, get that sooner than later. I, uh, I'm excited for everyone to get together, for us to have some good conversations and, I mean, a good community, uh, event, so. And other than that, I think that's all for me, so.
Um, the Athletic Board of Control, we went over all of the numbers and, and things for the, with the ball helmets. Yeah, everything comes with an expiration date these days and so we're going to have to be replacing. Uh, the, the one nice thing is that we have a very strong football alumni club, which can help us with that. Uh, so they were asked to, uh, actually softball coach, I brought that up. Um, but, uh, spring sports are up and running, we've, we've got a, a bunch of spots, uh, still open. Uh, so if any of the kids are wanting to join a sport, uh, I know track is still looking for people, tennis is still looking for people. Um, softball I think is set and I believe baseball is too. So there's still a few things that you can do and, uh, and other than that, that's all.
Alright, um, well, I did attend the CTC meeting last night and I'm going to ask Ryan a question in a minute, so I'll give you a little bit of a heads up about this, because I'm, I'm going to mention this and then come back to it. But they have a legislative liaison for CTC as well, and he brought up, he brought up a bill that hasn't been approved by the legislature yet. And I'm probably going to get the number wrong, because I didn't write it down and it just came to my mind, but I wondered if it's even on your radar yet. But it had to do with, I want to say it's House Bill One, but it, the part that he brought up had to do with a tax change that the legislature is considering, that has to do with a cut in income tax and an increase of property taxes for the folks who pay property taxes. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to ask you about it, and if you don't mind sharing when we get to you in a minute, I'd like to hear what you think about it. Um, cool, well, that's a good segue, that actually worked. Um, anybody else with comments on community reports, if you'll leave to Dr. Townsend? Alright, so you're.
Alright, thank you. Um, first of all, I want to just let everybody know that I met with the parents who came last board meeting and we had a great first meeting and we've already got our next, um, meeting scheduled for April. Great discussions, I really appreciate their time, um, and the process that we've gone through, so I just want to give them a shout out, so thank you. Um, I'd also like to wish Belinda Cox well, as she's retiring, she will be missed tremendously. And then I just want everybody to have a safe and happy spring break, I can't believe spring break's here, so.
Alright, Mr. Sloan?
Um, so regarding House Bill One, um, so, you know, it's been, it's been introduced, um, but it, you know, but I mean, once, uh, so House Bill One, it, it attempts to make some pretty big changes to the, to income taxes and property taxes. The, the main thing that the, uh, legislators are trying to do is to continue to reduce the state income tax and it would, so like, so the proposal has, it would reduce, reduce the income tax to a flat two point seven five percent. Uh, like right now, currently the highest rate is three point nine nine percent for individuals, so, uh, they would reduce it to two point seven five and so that would, um, and that would obviously generate less money for the state. So then the state's logic, you know, to replace that lost revenue was, was that the state would, would not pay the ten percent rollback that they currently pay on, you know, for, for homes. So like right now, for example, um, if, when, on your real estate tax bill, I'm kind of generalizing, but you basically only pay eighty-seven and a half percent of your tax bill and then the state pays the other twelve and a half percent. So the state is talking about reduce, basically eliminating that ten percent, ten percent rollback and then making a big change to the two and a half percent. So, so the state would save money by not paying a majority of that twelve and a half percent of your tax bill. So, big picture, I mean, what would happen is that, I mean, people would see their individual income tax rates decline, but on average, they would probably see their real estate tax bill increase by about six or eight percent. And the person I, that I spoke with at OASCO, which is the group for business managers and, and treasures, um, you know, she, her comment was, the legislators didn't do the math and they didn't think this through because when it came out, I mean, uh, OSBA and OASCO and BASSA, I mean, they started pointing out the flaws in it immediately. So, um, I think there will be major revisions to House Bill One. Um, I mean, there's, and those, you know, there's, there's already, you know, legislators are getting a lot of pushback on this and, um, because, you know, how do you, you know, how do you go sell, you know, explain that to, to somebody on a fixed income, for example, you know, who wouldn't benefit from an income tax cut and it's like, uh, sorry that you don't benefit from the income tax cut, but sorry that your real estate taxes went up six or eight percent. Um, so there's going to be a lot of conversation about House Bill One the next, uh, three plus months. Um, for us, for example, it would, um, I mean, one thing it would do for us is that it would, we would, we would lose about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of tax revenue each and every year. Um, and then our, our assessed value would, would decrease because, um, that, that was just part of their math on how to, how to justify it, so, um, I think there's, it's going to be a lot of changes and discussion about House Bill One between now and June thirty. Is that kind of, yeah. And then the other thing I just wanted to, to go over, I gave you this sheet of paper, um, on, on the fronts, on the, the one side has the, the top and bottom, um, so the top half is, is our funding, um, so it, it was our first, we get payments from the state twice a month, this was our first payment in November. So in the middle, um, I circled that, at that time, our state funding was twenty point nine six million dollars. And so that was the number that I used at the end of, uh, November when we did our five-year forecast. And then the bottom half of the page is our state funding as our first payment in February. And then down at the very bottom of the page, you can see that our state funding, uh, last month was up to twenty-one point three million dollars. So it's about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase and that was mainly due to, um, business managers and transportation people across the state, they filed T-two report, um, around, late, around November or so. So, and then, so then December and January, the state, you know, they recalculate transportation funding and they also recalculate, uh, preschool special ed funding, those are the two areas on there that I had the check mark, so. So there are pretty significant changes in our transportation and the preschool special ads, that's the reason that our state funding, went, went up by about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from November to February, so that, that is a good thing. And then on the flip side is, um, so it's like right now, we're in twenty-two, twenty-three, which is year two of the six-year phase-in, um, regarding the funding formula. And, and near the top, um, there's a line that's November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. So when I did the, when we did the forecast, it did in November, you know, those were the numbers that I was using in our forecast. You know, you, based on the, the six-year phase-in up through twenty-six, twenty-seven, so, um, we basically had about a two percent increase each and every year in our, in our state funding, um, in our forecast. And then in mid-February, when I knew that our funding was at twenty-one point three million, then I, then that would translate into, into the numbers on that line and pretty much used a similar two percent increase each and every year. So, and that, that is good news in terms of, you know, if I were doing the forecast, if I had done the forecast back in February, I mean, our state funding would be a revenue, estimated revenue would be significantly higher than it was based on the November forecast. And what, and then the main point is just trying to compare that to, to what the governor came, the governor released his budget in mid-February. So down in the bottom left, um, so you can see, so what the governor basically, like his numbers for, for us specifically were, um, you know, our foundation funding would increase one point three percent next year and then zero point eight percent the following year. And then the big part of the governor's budget, um, was that he, he put several million dollars in the budget to, to all districts for SRO funding, so for our district it's about three hundred and twenty-five thousand. So you add that together and if the, if the governor's budget stood, um, you know, if it was actually effective, uh, July one, then we would see a two point eight percent increase next year and then a point seven, so, um, the total, that's three point five. And, but, but compared to, you know, up above, you know, if we were just under the regular formula, yeah, I think we would see, you know, a two and a two, so. The way I'm looking at it is, you know, the governor's budget is, you know, over a two-year total, it's, it's less than what we would be looking at if we were just staying with the normal, um, you know, two percent, two percent phase-ins. Because I mean, but he's trying to give us additional money but put strings, the, the strings attached to the SRO part of it. So we, we spend about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty thousand a year for our three SROs. So, I mean, if this held, then we, then we would have another sixty thousand dollars that we would, um, you know, need to allocate toward, toward SROs. Um, I mean, this is all, you know, this is all subject to change, you know, the House will release our version of the budget and then the Senate will, um, but just kind of wanted to give you a, you know, a framework of, you know, what his numbers mean compared to, um, you know, compared to what we would, we're typically looking at in terms of the six-year phase-in. Um, I mean, if you see comments about, um, like fully funding the formula, like when, when you hear people talk about fully funding the formula, what they're talking about is, is getting us to, to our twenty-six, twenty-seven funding by the end of twenty-four, twenty-five. So instead of giving us four years of two percent increases, give us two years of four percent increases because, you know, the state is, has an incredible, incredibly large, um, granny day fund and it's disappointing, um, you know, that, for us, for example, that, you know, we're only looking at, you know, a two point eight and a point seven percent increase, uh, with, with the, with the big granny day fund. So hopefully, you know, the House and Senate, um, hopefully their budget numbers, uh, will have better scenarios than what we're looking at now. So just wanted to try to just give a summary of, of what we're looking at, you know, with some state budget numbers.
Uh, last night it was shared that, I don't know, I think I'm going to remember this exactly, but that the granny day fund was around two and a half billion dollars, um, so definitely some funds there. Alright, so leaving on, I don't see anybody here from either union, Education Association Unclassifieds, so we'll move to Central Office Staff, which, we'll start with Evan if we can, anything tonight? Anything tonight?
No, I haven't come in.
My turn? Yeah, I, I don't have any specific comments, uh, programmer-related, but I did wanna just say how great it has been to work with Belinda Cox over the years, she has been outstanding. We deal with her a lot, with a lot of unique situations for students, great problem solver, great relationships with other districts, and we've always been able to get done all of the things that we need to get done, so it would be difficult to fill those shoes, for sure.
Julie?
Don't ask me what happened with my phone, it was on, I thought it was some emergency call, I called home to make sure that I was okay, so, sorry about that.
And Kleenexes or anything, we'll, we'll save that for August, I guess?
All right, so we're at the portion where we have public comments, I will make just a quick reminder that we will set a timeout if we're in, and, um, we typically don't really respond to questions directly, but if we do need to have a response, it's to you from me, or Dr. Townsend will certainly do that. Uh, the only speaker I see here is Michelle, how do you say your last name?
Blaker.
Blaker. I think, I think I missed that up last time. So you have five minutes, if you would, just use the podium, and we'll just give you kind of a heads up if you get to the end of March, to let you know how close you're getting with five minutes.
Hi, thank you guys for letting me speak. I'm here tonight because I am pleading to the board to allow my daughter to go to prom. There was a fight that happened December thirteenth, and should have and could have been prevented if staff and faculty had acted promptly and appropriately to the warning that was delivered to them the morning of. My son went to a principal, said I am being threatened, I am going to be jumped, he had text messages. The principal did not take him seriously. He told the principal everything that was happening, he did not take this child seriously. On top of that, a known bully that has threatened to shoot the school last year, threatened to stab my son that day. This is an ongoing issue, this goes back to the last meeting of the bullying. My daughter interfered, because this child should have, and was supposed to have been chaperoned from class to class, because he tried to, not tried, he did go to assault my daughter back in October, and he missed her face and hit her, his fist went through her hair. That being said, I talked to a principal and a staff member in this building, I tried very hard not to name drop. And I'm sorry if I get emotional, but you don't wake up every day, and your life is torn upside down because the school failed to protect your children, you know? Children are told, do not fight. If you have an issue, you have a problem, come to us and we will solve it. My son did that, and you, as a school, failed him, and you know exactly what I'm talking about. And I will not forget this. He should have been protected, he went to a principal, and said my life is in danger today. He was so upset, he did not wanna go to school. But I couldn't deal with what he had to tell me that morning, so yeah, maybe I failed him too. And it's sad, you know, my daughter paid her dues, she is never in her life, this is her senior year. She's never in her life been in a fight, she's never been in trouble. And because she got in a fight protecting her brother, then your school failed to protect him. She cannot go to her senior prom, she got a felony assault charge, she did eight hours of community service, and she had a five-day suspension. That is the first time this child has ever, ever been in trouble. She will be eighteen on Friday, she is a senior this year and never been in trouble, and she can't go to her prom because she was protecting her brother, which you guys said she forgot to protect. How is that fair? That is not fair at all, and I am pleading to the council to let her go to her prom. That is all I have to say.
You asked your things here, sorry.
Her notebook's up here.
Her notebook.
Sir? Her notebook's up here.
This is an emergency. Well, it's always hard to hear that, it's always hard to, um, sit here and know what you've seen in the past with your own kids, and, and, um, I appreciate, I appreciate her sharing, that was hard to do, and, um, I know this does, some of this does venture back to the last meeting, and some of the comments that were made by the parents who showed up, who made six speakers at the last meeting to talk about this topic, so, um, you know, we'll certainly appreciate her comments, and, um, certainly can't make any promises, as, as a board, I'm one member, we're all just one member, and so, uh, but I do appreciate her coming and sharing, and, um, I know this, obviously, you know, tearing her up and perceiving her not being able to go to prom, so, um, with, uh, any further ado, we'll go to, um, to board comments, we'll start with Autumn, actually. Yeah, why don't you start first?
Hello, everyone, thank you for coming this evening. I just wanna say that it's been a privilege to serve the community, and I'm excited for the students to have a fabulous and safe spring break.
Okay. Just a few things, uh, first of all, I want to, uh, congratulate Belinda on her retirement. I have always said that driving the bus is the worst job. The kids and the parents and, and everything from A to Z, but they do it with, with great precision. Uh, I'm always in the bus parking lot in the spring and in the fall, and, and Belinda's always taking care of the kids. And whenever I've had a question, all I had to do was, uh, send her an email, she got right back to me, and, uh, is always taking care of it, so I wish her, um, good luck and, and happiness in her retirement. She is very much deserved and, uh, great big shoes to fill, definitely. Moving on, the, uh, final walkthroughs for the pre-K one and the five-six building will be done in May. And, uh, so, that is bringing the elf program, which was our portion of the, the bond money, to a close, which would allow us to receive our credit from the OCC. So hopefully, all of that will come to an end sometime this summer, so we'll let you know how that goes. But the, uh, the buildings are doing well, there's just a couple, two, three things, as, as you know, when you build a house or you buy a new car, there's always something that has, but we've been able to keep up with all of it and on task. And the, uh, OCC part of it, um, Chris Colado, he works with all the finance members and sends us huge blood sheets and everything. But we balanced to the cent, thanks to our wonderful treasurer down here, um, who keeps everything on task, and that is what's actually allowing us to advance this project to the end. So, kudos to you, you've done a great job, um, and I'm sure you will have an even bigger job with this next one, because that one is funneling money through us from the state, so this is their, their part of it. But getting this done and then moving on to get our credit is a most important thing to do. I wish everybody a safe spring break, and, uh, again, if you wanna join the sport, there's still plenty of time to do so. Thank you.
All right, Nate?
All the way at the end of the table here, um, you know, of course, I just wanna start out, of course, Michelle, I mean, that's tough. I, I know it's not easy, and with everything that they've been through, um, prom being the, uh, being the thing that they, uh, that they're hoping for is, uh, I mean, it's tough, so, and I'm happy that she came up and talked, that's always something, uh, but I know it's not easy. Bomb, brother terms, I know, robotics, whatever they're doing to, uh, get all this money, I need to start learning, because they are getting so many amazing donations, and of course, they will deserve it, right? But whatever they're doing, I mean, it is just incredible, the amount of money that they're bringing in from these manufacturing places, and from wherever, I mean, it is just amazing what they're doing, so, kudos to them on their team to get sponsorships or whatnot, I don't know exactly how that's working, but. I was also gonna mention, at the, uh, city council meeting, by the way, thank you for being here, um, at the city council meeting yesterday, the, I forget, Karen at the library, she's like, I don't know if she's the head person or what at the library, she's a fantastic person, but she mentioned that there, for the mural, that there's a reception for the mural, um, to like, celebrate it or something. It's gonna be April thirteenth from six to seven at the library, so I don't know exactly what they have there, but she mentioned about it, and, I mean, the mural is beautiful, I mean, it is gorgeous what these kids can do, and, uh, you know, so if anyone wants to go out and celebrate that, and celebrate the amazing things that our students do, that's a great thing to do. What time? It's six to seven P.M., so, I mean, a fantastic thing to, uh, go to. And of course, uh, you know, it's St. Patrick's Day coming up, and, uh, so of course, I got a quote that, uh, relates to that, and that is about friendship, "A good friend is like a four-leaf clover, hard to find and lucky to have." And says Irish proper on it, so. Um, so, it's always good to have amazing friends to rely on and to love, so, and of course, have a great spring break, I'm excited, thank you.
All right, and I'll start with, um, of course congratulating, uh, Belinda on her career here at West Kelton, and I know the, the place in here won't be easy, but, uh, we'll use it for a few months, just overload her if you can, for the next three or four months, and let's get the gear out of her or something. A couple of the things, I wanna thank all the parents and the band students who volunteered this past weekend, that the, the high school sponsors, sponsors, they host, that's a better word, uh, some O M E A, uh, actual orchestra and band, uh, students from, uh, a little, a little over a dozen schools, Beaver Creek itself, which I think most of you may know this, Beaver Creek has one of the largest music band programs in this area, they have six concert bands in the high school, and three of them actually perform at, uh, this event, it was Friday night and Saturday. Just wanna thank those who came out and, uh, and helped organize that, most, most of it was students, and they really got kind of ball and told to do it by Mr. Bukowski, but that's okay, um, that's what it's for, and so, we were good hosts, heard a lot of compliments from band directors from a couple of different high schools, while I was in the office handling, they let me handle registration, and we actually didn't fall apart, so, that was good, but I heard some really good compliments from some of them about how organized it was, and, and just how well everything is laid out. Also, I wanna publicly thank Beaver Creek High School, because they did loan some percussion instruments to us, so that there was a place for bands to both practice and an actual equipment for the stage. So, having Beaver Creek loan us some of the larger percussion equipment really helped make that event better for, for us too, so, I wanna thank them. Also, the, um, other two comments I wanna make is I wanna thank, uh, Jack, today, he helped, uh, Autumn and Nate and myself with a tour of, uh, the intermediate school, where the fitness instructors are, and this building as well. Leslie had some coaching things to deal with, so she couldn't make it, and Joe, of course, is in Florida, so he couldn't be there, but at least, uh, the three of us were able to, to kinda get a, a closer look at the classrooms and the layout of, uh, obviously, we've been in this building some, but, uh, I haven't been in the five-six building really at all. So, Jack, I appreciate you taking, uh, an hour and a half of your afternoon and leading us over there and showing us around. And then lastly, uh, when it comes, can you bring them all right? When it comes to, uh, pirate packs, I wanna publicly thank three organizations that are helping us. We are still struggling financially, but, um, NuVasive, which is a locally-owned business here, didn't really know where it was, until I delivered some barrels to them, they're actually at the end of the road where the wire is. They are doing a food drive for about this, from now to about the end of March, but they're also doing a March Madness, uh, job as well, where they're having, a lot of folks probably doing brackets starting tomorrow, and they are doing a fundraiser, basically, where they're taking half of whatever funds they raised from the people who participate in their bracket contest and donating it to us. The Community Blood Bank is also doing the same thing with March Madness, and also doing a food drive. And Southmore Community Church, which is pretty large, and just a couple of members at this district who go there, they are doing a food drive for us, and we have some really good organizations that are trying to help us with at least large, well, hopefully will be fairly large food drives to help us offset some costs and be able to get through this school year. And we're hoping in April to be able to serve the students every week again. Right now, we're having to rotate, and we're having to do two schools one week, and three schools the next, and we're hoping by beginning of April, we can go back to doing all five for the last six or seven weeks of school, so hopefully that'll happen. Don't really have anything on the agenda as far as a work session or executive session is concerned, so I will entertain a motion in secret to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Little call, please.
Ms. Harwood?
Yes.
Mr. Rob?
Yes.
Mr. Milk?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.